We are doing our best to comply with the Governor's order and continue to do city business. So we have three of our council members that are participating remotely tonight, and we will have the city clerk give us a brief on how we will proceed, and then I will call the meeting to order. City Clerk, Debra Thomas.
Good evening. In accordance with the Governor's executive order and 2520, the City of Grand Terrace is authorized to make public meetings accessible electronically for members of the public wishing to address the city council during the public comment portion of this meeting. Due to the stay-at-home order issued by the Governor, the City of Grand Terrace encourages community members to take basic steps as protection against the coronavirus. If you are interested in addressing the city council but cannot or do not wish to physically attend, an accessible email is available to you to participate remotely. Comments received will be shared in real time. Please provide your comments via email as follows: ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. Again, that's ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov.
And we have a separate room here at the facility. Our community room is open to members of the public who would like to be here on-site. They can view the meeting in our community room, and there is a staff member to assist them in coming in to give public comment if they wish to do so, or they can send an email through that system. So at this time, I will call to order the city council meeting for the City of Grand Terrace, March 24, 2020. And at this time, those of you who are in the room, or those of you that have a flag in your location, please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I believe we must to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please? Councilmember Allen?
I'm here.
Councilmember Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Robles?
Present.
Mayor Protem Doug Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Present.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a forum. Thank you, and I'll apologize once for the lovely sounds that we have emanating from our technology. We don't have any special presentations tonight. Do we have any reordering additions or removal of items from the agenda to consider?
We do not, Mayor.
All right, thank you. So we'll move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Mr. City Manager.
I did want to pull an item from the agenda. I'm sorry, let me...
Okay, can we take the consent calendar first, and we'll come back?
Absolutely.
All right. Are there any requests to remove an item from the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Hussey, and a second by Councilmember Allen. And our city clerk will give a roll call vote. Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, so we will go back to reordering additions or removal. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to remove item H5 from the agenda.
Okay. Will that be coming back at another time?
It will not.
It will not be coming back?
It will not be coming back.
Okay. So we will remove item number five from our agenda, and then we will take up our agenda where we left off, which was public comment. Do we have any requests to speak during this time? This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items not on the agenda.
Madam Mayor, we have not received any emails to speak.
Okay. So I will close public comment and move on to the remainder of our agenda. We'll start with council communications. Councilmember Allen, did you have anything that you wanted to communicate at this time?
Well, I just wanted to let all the residents know that we're in this all together. I want to thank those who are respecting the Governor's and FEMA's recommendations, those who can stay at home, and I respect those who find it necessary to leave. I just want those out there to know that we're there for you. We're here, and we're in this together. We'll help you. All you have to do is reach out, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen.
Councilmember Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. As well, I concur. I want to thanks all the businesses in the City of Grand Terrace for staying open and being there, especially the grocery stores and, well, Grocery Outlet, Sater Brothers, CVS, Walgreens, mom-and-pop stores supplying supplies that our residents need. And I'd just like to say, you know, I've been to a couple of stores just checking out the thing, how's everything's going, and everybody's been really respectful, courteous, helpful, and I know the grocery workers and everybody else, the other logistics that go around it are pretty tired, but I want to thank you for all your efforts in keeping that supply chain going for our residents. And I want to say, you know, everybody's in my prayers in the City of Grand Terrace, and if you need anything, please don't hesitate. You know, get ahold of the city. You can email me. If I'm out running around and I see what you need, I'll pick it up for you. And it's just great seeing that residents in the City of Grand Terrace helping each other. So my prayers are with everybody in Grand Terrace, and prayers with this country and this world, so we get through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
Yes, I just want to also tell the folks out there that we are all in this together. It's difficult. You know, I'm 67, so I'm self-quarantining, and it's getting a little tough, but it's going to be worth it. And I also want to extend my condolences to the Adaco Barrera family, losing Rosie Adaco. And it's really tough to have a loss and also not to be able to have a funeral, and to have to cancel services twice because of this continuing change in our circumstances. So my prayers and best wishes to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem Doug Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to address the citizens. I believe this is a trial time for it, but I do believe that we have faith in the systems and faith in those who guide us, and of course, faith in God, that we'll come through with this, and we will carry on life. I'd like to thank all those, our responders, and of course, also the gas station people, the hospitals, the medical personnel, and our stores here in Grand Terrace. They've all been fantastic, and I know that they're putting their lives on the line, and I'm trying to do my best to make sure that I don't aggravate that circumstance. So anyway, let's just pat it down, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, I will echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I also want to thank the staff. I know they are working overtime to not only do their normal day-to-day, but they have a lot of extra reporting responsibilities and making sure that they stay safe while they do it. They are coming to work despite the opportunity to maybe not come to work, and I know that once we have employees that start to not feel well, that our city manager is sending those employees home. So we are looking to take care of our employees. I've seen a number of families out walking together in the sunshine. That's nice to see, families getting together. It's got to be very difficult on the kids to be quarantined so much, and I also know that neighbors are reaching out to neighbors to help in any way they can. And so unfortunately, we are in a very odd set of circumstances, but it seems like we are all doing our part to work together to get through this. So again, thank you to staff for setting up this remote so that we are able to continue our business while being in compliance. And I will end right there and move on to the rest of our agenda. We do not have any public hearings. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business, which is a proclamation of existence of a local emergency. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. So I'm going to have to have... There we go. So tonight before the city council is the declaration and proclamation of a local emergency in response to COVID-19. So on March 18, 2020, the city manager, in his capacity as the Director of Emergency Services, proclaimed an emergency in accordance with California Government Code Section 8630 and Grand Terrace Municipal Code 2.28.060. The emergency proclamation is based on conditions of extreme peril to the safety of persons and property within the city as consequences of the global spread of severe acute respiratory illness caused by the novel new coronavirus or COVID-19. So a bit of a history on this. On March 4, 2020, California Governor declared the state of an emergency. Then on March 10, 2020, County of San Bernardino declared a county emergency. Then on March 13, 2020, President Donald J. Trump declared a national emergency. So during this entire timeframe, we were watching to see what was happening and in constant contact with the county who provides our first responders' information in terms of San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department and the San Bernardino County Fire Department. Then on March 18, 2020, the city manager issued a proclamation of a local emergency for ratification by the council at tonight's meeting. So the approval of the proclamation will allow the Director of Emergency Services, which is the city manager, to issue rules and regulations on matters reasonably related to protection of life and property as it affects by such local emergency, and a proclamation will enhance the city's ability to mobilize local resources, coordinate with inter-agency response, mutual aid, and seek reimbursements. The proclamation will remain in effect until city council takes legislative action to withdraw a proclamation of local emergency. Prior to this, the normal regulations would last for 60 days with the governor, with the council having to come back and reaffirm that. But in this particular case, the governor has waived those requirements. So one of the things that we've done along the way is try to identify information to give to the citizens regarding the coronavirus. So these are some of the things that we've put into place. The city's response to coronavirus or COVID-19, we work with local experts, like the County Public Health Officer, the County of San Bernardino OES Department. We've had daily contact with the first responders, the County of San Bernardino Fire Department, County of San Bernardino Sheriff's Department, and the Operation Area Emergency Operations Center. And that basically is the head for the entire county, where we are able to get consistent information utilizing the county's resources to be able to respond to any emergency that might occur. And we also develop information to keep the public informed, because the council might be well aware, we're receiving information from multiple resources, and sometimes it's not as clear as it should be. So one of the tasks we've done is actually posted on our webpage and our other social media aspects for the coronavirus, how to protect yourself. And we encourage the citizens to go to the tiny URL that we've set up, this is the tinyurl.com/COVID19-92313. That will take you to information to allow you to sign up for our city's newsletter, which will take you to consistent information that you can receive on a regular basis. It includes information for the County Public Health Officer. It includes information for the Center of Disease Control, which is updated every day at noon. It also receives informational videos and resources for vulnerable populations, such as our elderly and our high school students, our students who have been... Schools have been closed down, but they still have challenges for breakfast and lunch. And so it provides information on how they can still receive those services. As I said before, this site has dynamic information that's updated on a regular basis. As one interpretation of the law comes out one day, it may change the next day with updated information. It's important to be able to have a place you can go to to get information that's real-time and relevant. So part of this is to look at the impacts to our operations, the city. So the city's closed city parks, Richard Rollins Park, the Dog Park. This is the Senior Center Park. This is Fitness Park. And this is Veterans Freedom Park. So all the parks are closed until April 4, 2020. Now, that also may change as we get information back from the governors and also from the Other programs that are impacted, our senior bus program, the schedule's been modified where we are taking seniors to shopping, where they have hours expressly set aside for seniors. We've modified our schedule to be able to provide them that service. The county libraries are closed. City Hall, the lobby is closed, but you can continue to do business by appointment. And city staff is at work from 8 to 5, and we are available via telephone. So as I said, the schedule's been modified for the bus, and the lobby has been closed. Another important aspect, which we'll be coming back to the council, is that because the economy is sort of at a standstill at some point in time during these issues, most of the revenues which we were projecting in this year's budget might have some significant impact. So we're looking at a projection of 20% to 50% that we're going to be looking at in terms of coming back to the council, a future council meeting, to kind of go over what those scenarios might look like. And we are going to be able to get some reimbursement for our emergency services, and we're looking at various ways of what the economic programs that Congress has just approved, see how that's going to assist us. But it's prudent for us to be able to come back to the council with a plan to look at how we can adjust our forecasts for this year in terms of to maintain our solvency. I put this chart up because the city does have a history of looking at ways to manage itself during hard times. And so I did want to remind the council that for this particular purpose, the council has set aside two months' worth of revenue, approximately about $1 million, to be able to address issues just like this. And so we have a healthy reserve to be able to allow us to get through this process, but we will be coming back to the council with a Plan B on our reserves for this fiscal In addition to that, business does continue, and it's quite timely that the city was able to work with bringing a new grocer into town. The Grocery Outlet is open, and it's a nice complement to providing residents with an option as they look for places to shop. As different areas run out of different materials, the grocery outlet has been quite a help for the community. In addition, business continues. As we just received today, the plans for Taco Bell's for their construction. So we believe that's going to start relatively soon. They've submitted their construction plans, their demo plans, and their landscape plans. We have also have other major projects that are in play. We are still working with the Lewis Group during this timeframe. We are also working with the Greens Group. They have made contact with us, and they've made some requests, which I'll update the council on in the near future. So the impacts to our staff, we've gone through and we've looked at our operations in making determinations for essential staff. We've also looked at, as Mayor said earlier, when employees are feeling sick. One of the things that we do is if they call us sick, and then they want to come back to work, and we see that they're not at 100%, instead of risking having their flu or cold spread to the entire staff, we recommend that they go home. And during this timeframe, when we send an employee home, we're exercising our right to send them home, and it's not going to be their time that they're going to be using, but it's going to be our time, because we want to make sure that we make sure the employees are safe at work, and also the employees who are not 100% can get back to 100% and come back to work. All employees of the city are disaster relief employees and can be mobilized. So part of the process, we've ensured that all of our employees have their proper IDs and that they've been informed on how we mobilize, and to ensure, for example, if a disaster happens and employees don't live in town, the Sheriff's Department will not allow them to come into town unless they can prove that they are an employee. We have activated our Citizens Emergency Response Team, our CERT, and as council knows, over the last couple of years, we've been very active in terms of training new CERT members, so they are alert and ready to take action once we need them. We're also utilizing our AM 1640 radio for emergency broadcasts and updates to citizens on what's happening with the coronavirus. We're also putting information on Channel 3, our internet, and our Facebook page.
Are there any questions of staff at this time?
I'd like to...
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know how the other councilmembers heard what you guys were saying. But I didn't hear or hear, I didn't understand anything. But I do know what the report was about. But I didn't hear any. So I just wanted to let whoever's handling audio issues to know that this is something that we're going to have to work on. I mean, I hear you great, Mayor. So I don't know why Mr. Duffy came so broken and distorted, but the only question I would have is, was, did Mr. Duffy say anything about the immediate... Is there any concern with the immediate future financial status of the city?
Mr. Duffy, I have an opinion that you would be better heard if you came and sat here, so I will move to the side when you come up here and sit in front of this computer.
Thank you, Mayor. Are you guys able to hear me now?
That's great.
Okay, great. One of the things that I did show earlier was a slide that we utilize a lot in terms of our fund balance that we have. We have the two-months fund balance, and I did talk about that we will be coming back to the council in the near future with a projection of what we believe our revenue shortfall will be based upon what has happened during this quarter. So what we'll be doing is we'll be coming back with a scenario that talks about a 50% reduction during this quarter, down to a 20% reduction, and that's in addition to the two months' worth of revenue, which is about $1 million that you've set aside just for cases just like this.
Okay. Are you talking about those reductions? Are you... Is that workforce or work量?
So when I say reduction, I mean reduction in revenues, because we're... Yes, yes. And so when I come back with a reduction in terms of...
Is this better? Is the microphone...
So one of the things that I've mentioned before is that you have that two months' worth of revenue, which is your fund balance, which is about $1 million, and we'll be coming back to the council this quarter with information...
Look at them while you're talking.
Will we come back to the council? Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Can you guys hear me? Yeah, I can hear you fine, Mr. Duffy. Well, not fine, but I can understand what you're saying now.
Councilmember Robles?
Better, but it's the volume points.
Okay.
It's baked in and out on intervals about one second.
Okay, we're getting some feedback on it.
I think it's our data flow rate, probably. And broadband had played a part of that.
Okay, well, I can try to talk very quickly, once again, about the question regarding our financial position. So the...
That was answered.
Okay.
You've answered that for me just fine, Mr. Duffy. So if you want to continue on explaining something, but you've done fine for me. You've answered my question, and thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, further questions from council?
No. No.
Okay. I heard a no from Mayor Protem, and I heard a no from Councilmember Robles and Councilmember Hussey. Did you have any questions?
No.
Okay. All right, so that ends the question portion. Are there any members of the public who are lying this week at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
And you have no email that has come in?
No, Madam Mayor. I can take one moment to see if there is anybody next door.
I think that they would have sent an email, or they would have come in. You have Allen French in there?
I do.
Okay. All right, so we will close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation, further discussion, or consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion. Can we adopt the resolution?
All right.
All right.
I have a motion by Councilmember...
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Allen, and a second by Mayor Protem. I don't think you heard him, Councilmember Robles. So a motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Protem Wilson, and we will have the city clerk call the roll for the vote. Councilmember Allen? Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson? And Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. We have no requests to speak for future agenda items by the council. Mr. City Manager, do you have any further communications for us tonight?
I do not, Mayor.
All right, and we have no closed session. So, thank you all for your participation. We will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, April 14, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office. It will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Again, thank you for your patience with us and our technology, and thank you all for your participation remotely. We are adjourned.